Open meeting, posted around the corner is the actual Open Meeting Act. If you would, please stand with us for a moment of silence and as well, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Continual roll call.
Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill. Lawson.
Here.
Murren.
Here.
Moaning.
Here.
Faust.
Here.
File.
Here.
Okay. And I would ask for approval of the consent agenda. I have provided you.
So move your other.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve the consent agenda. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And as well, I'm asking for approval of the full agenda.
So moved, Your Honor?
Second.
We have a motion with a second to approve the full agenda. Again, if you will, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay. And our presentations, looks like this evening, we are going to hear from the Norfolk Fire Division on their 2013-14 Annual Report. Chief Cordis.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, you've got before you, I believe, a copy of our annual report. That's representative of the fiscal year that ended on September 30th. So in there are significant statistics of the various categories and the duties that are performed at the Fire Division. I will not bore you with the recap of all that stuff. If you have specific questions about any of them, I'll certainly answer those, but I just tend to highlight a couple things. First and foremost, when you look at that front page, that represents the people that I have the privilege to serve as the Fire Chief for, and I'm proud of each and every one of those folks. And when I get to stand here at the end of a reporting period and comment that all those folks are safe and in stow and no one's suffered any death or injury from the previous year, that's a great year for us. And so I always start with the most important part is taking care of the assets that make up the family at Norfolk Fire that are out on the streets doing the hard work. So I'm proud of those and I'm glad that we start this new year with all those folks alive and well. This is the most diverse fire department in the state of Nebraska. It's undeniable, it's indisputable. There are no other career departments in the state that have the diversity of planning and zoning, code enforcement, and emergency management attached to the Fire Department. You'll find that nowhere else. And so when we say there's some things happening at the Fire Division, there always is because of the uniqueness of the various tasks that are being performed there, there's a wide variety of things representing a lot of interests and a lot of corners of the community life that we touch. And as a result of that, it's a busy time full of all kinds of activities. And so as I look at those things, the staff that take care of those functions are important to us. Probably the most significant thing happening there right now is the replacement of two longstanding employees that have left us in the past year, that being Jim Dooley. We're moving forward to the replacement of his position by the end of the month. They intend to have that Assistant Chief of Operations position filled. And then Captain Laelut, his transfer over to admin created another vacancy, which I again, hope to have filled by the end of the month. So two critical people. We wish them the best in their future endeavors, but left two big holes that we need to have filled, and I intend to have that done by the end of the month so that we can get back up to full speed. With that complement of those two gentlemen back in place, or those promotions in place, we'll be full at 38 full-time staff, plus the emergency manager, and then 30 full-time reserves. Our allotment is 30 of our reserve staff, and we are currently at that limit right now. So that's a great thing to have, and we count on that reserve staff greatly to buttress our career staff and all our emergency responses. People often ask about, how does this year compare to last year? Total calls for service were right in that same category, 2,233 total emergency responses between the Fire and EMS side, the operations side of the Fire Department. And of those, that covers the whole gamut of all the responses that you see the units going up and down the street for. One of the things that was most notable in that was the mutual aid that we provided to Stanton, the village of Pilgar in their disaster earlier this year. So those type of things are taking place. Representation of some of the equipment that we purchased, we took possession of that new engine that you authorized last year. It's in service now and is working wonderfully. We're in the process, if you approve the action tonight, to move forward with bids on a new ambulance to replace our oldest in the fleet of the four. And so we're proud of those pieces of apparatus and the tools that we need to do the job. So we're grateful for your support in allowing us to have those items. Planning and zoning was busy again this year. Obviously, when those things become controversial or have significant emotional attachment, you guys get involved in it. You experienced that this past year. Those are interesting times and challenged the staff hard to work through those events. And we appreciate the hard work that the planning staff does. And likewise, in the Prevention Bureau, all those inspection activities and all those interactions with the community is a tough job, and we appreciate the efforts of Trent and his staff working through all those challenges each year, trying to keep our community safe. So on the prevention side. As you look through the document, again, if there's anything that stands out or any questions that are relevant that you'd like to ask me, I'd sure try to answer those, but in the spirit of time and a busy agenda, we'll be quiet for now. And in advance, thank you for your support and the working relationship that we maintain with the Fire Department. We appreciate everything you all do to make our job easy.
I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
I was just looking through the booklet here, and the rural district population from 2014 to 2014, I mean, 2014 to 2015 changed by like 500 or 638? What? Just a, I mean, that's a good, it's a good thing. I would just, that's why, I don't know what would have caused that, bigger jump and...
I'm not sure. I'll have to look at that one. I know Faith looks at those new numbers each year in an attempt to glean a new number. I'll find out what that movement was, because I honestly don't know right now.
It's a good thing.
It's a great thing.
What are you looking at?
Some numbers you want to go up?
Well, let's see, page...
The very back.
Page 11, page 11, when you've got your demand.
Okay.
And it says city population, and it says rural district population.
Yep.
Then they got actual city and actual rural. And rural from 2013 to 2014 jumped up 638.
Well, those are estimated.
Yeah.
Those are estimated numbers, and I'm not sure if that's, yeah, I'm not sure if that's scientific. I'll find out.
Power of positive thinking, I think is what it is.
Yeah, keeping that optimism on the forefront.
Yeah.
Fair question, and I'll try to get a good answer for you. I don't know for sure.
Very good point.
It's a big population difference in our, or I mean, for estimate and actual, I guess.
Yeah, good point.
Our district didn't have, we didn't pick up some additional rural area, did we?
The rural district boundaries have not changed. No, sir.
Very informative report, too, Scott. I like the way you did this. Anyone else have any questions or thoughts? Or certainly on behalf of the entire community, job well done. We are very fortunate to have a Fire Division as we do, as strong, and certainly was there in time of need. So thank you for what it is and the way you lead, Scott. Certainly an example. So appreciate that.
Pass that on to the troops, Your Honor. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Thank you all.
Next, we have our good friends from the Airport Authority here with us tonight to make a presentation on the proposed hangar project. Dan, you know the rule. Sign in for us. State your name. Terry, you too. So good to have you back here.
Yeah. Dan Gary is my name, and I'm the Chairman of the Norfolk Airport Authority.
And I'm Terry Walker, and I'm the Manager of the Norfolk Airport.
Terry, you want to turn that on if you're going to stand there, please? Great.
I'll fill that out. Okay. Do all of you have a package that, in your group of paperwork that we sent? Okay. I'll be referring to that. And then I have the last page. The last page that is a floor plan of what the hangars will look like. The original one that I had didn't come off very good, so we got a better one ran out.
Thank you. Sorry, Terry, thanks very much.
Okay, this is the same project that we were here with earlier. We, the funds became available about the time we were putting our budget together, and we kind of hurried it and put it with our budget request. And so this is the same project that we were here with earlier. And if you remember, we got your approval, but there were quite a bit of questions about the hangar project, so I came back and asked if we would wait a while on it and we would come forward with some more information. So I'm here with the more information. This particular project did not affect the budget for this coming year, but it does affect the budget for the next 10 years, the way we have it scheduled. If you have your folder, I will go to, I will start with page three, a little bit of the hangar history. Norfolk Airport has 46 total hangars. If you look there, the E Row was constructed in 1968, and we put an addition on there in '78. D Row is constructed in 1965. C Row and L Row was in 1974, and we put an addition on in 2010, the two L hangars. I asked Terry to look back and find out when the last time was we had an empty hangar, and as near as she can tell...
I looked back as far as I could figure, and in August of 2010, since then, we have not had an empty hangar for maybe, say, more than two weeks. They've been filling up. In fact, we haven't actually had any, but they've been filling up. As they come available, and that's, well, 10, that's 40 years, so...
Yeah. And usually, usually the people that are moving out already have somebody in mind to go in there.
To go in.
So we're kind of told that, hey, so-and-so's taken over our hangar. But anyway, if you turn to page four, those are the hangar occupants. Forty-six hangars at the Norfolk Airport, hangars are occupied. Fifty-six percent of these are related to businesses. Now, we don't really pay attention to, a lot of times, the people will rent it in their own name, but we do know they're associated with a business, so this is a list of the businesses that are there. Down at the bottom of the page, there's some seasonal operations that go on. NPPD hires aerial power line patrols and they hangar once in a while out there. So that's some of the activity there at the bottom. Since we've had hangar inquiries, and if you asked us before, we would just simply tell you that we had hangar inquiries, and we didn't keep track of them. So here are the hangar inquiries that we have written down, documented, or whatever, that have been going on, October, November, and December. And then the people at the top of the page are people that have asked us for hangars in the last 12 months. And basically, we just have to tell them that you'll wait till a hangar becomes available, or we'll try to put them in with another, some of the big hangars that have two, three airplanes in them, we'll suggest that they go in there for a while. A lot of people don't like, if you own a fairly high-dollar airplane, and there's four planes in a larger hangar, and your plane is in the back, while somebody, our line guys or whatever, have to pull the front planes out, pull their plane out of the back, put the other two back in.
And that leaves them only access to their aircraft during the hours that we're out there. Because they don't want to, excuse me, move in the airplane. Actually, those multiple hangars are full, too.
Well, I know. Everything is full. Go to page six there, then. This is a recap of the hangar rent income that we bring in. So on the income side, we have a general aviation hangar rents of $10,650, and the leased tenant hangars of $68,000, or a total of $78,870. We'll get to another page, here, the next page, but we did raise the rents. We did do a survey of neighboring towns and whatever.
What other airports that compared to what Norfolk has to offer is what we use?
That's a little hard to compare, because people pay different money for a south-facing hangar versus a north-facing hangar, because the snow melts off, and then some of them are insulated, some of them have electricity, some of them have electricity paid, some of them have separate meters. There's all kinds of variations, but we've tried to do what we can. But anyway, we did raise the rental prices on the hangars 10%, starting January 1 of this year, and then we've decided to raise 2% each year afterwards. Now, that 2% is more like an automatic, so we don't not address our rent rates in other years. Now, that doesn't mean that we will only do 2% if expenses go up or something, that can be adjusted, but for now, it's proposed that 2% a year for the next five, six years, as was shown on here. And if you look at the right-hand side, that is the revenue that we bring in. We brought in $78,000 last year, and then it goes to '85, '87, '89. That's the rental income that we bring in. Page seven was a comparison, so that was a sheet that we used to adjust the rent rates. We have an eight-place hangar. Two things have happened this year. There's been some federal money that become available, and the Nebraska revolving hangar fund has money available. So part of the reason we rushed it with our schedule is because this money was available this year and now, and we signed up for it. Anyway, if you look on page eight, the right-hand column is the federal-funded money, and then the next column in, where it says hangar loan amount, that is the state revolving hangar fund. That's where the money comes from. If you notice, the total project is about $1 million. $297,000 comes from a federal program, and $702,000 comes out of the hangar fund. Excuse me. Part of it comes out of the hangar fund, we have to put in part of it. And if you look down below there, the hangar loan, $491,000 comes from the revolving hangar fund, which we get for 10 years at no interest rate. So 0% interest, and we pay that back over 10 years. We have to put in $210,000 of our own. We are going to also borrow that over a 10-year period. And then the $29,000 is our portion of the federal funds that go in. So $210,000 and $29,000 is our input, but then the $491,000 is a loan that we pay back each year. So if you go over here, the rental income that was shown on the previous pages does not include the new eight-place tee hangar. So the new eight-place tee hangar, the proposed rents, is on page nine. If you notice, it will produce $18,240 per year in rental income. Let's see, maybe we'll skip over page 10, but we basically have to make a decision by our January meeting, whether to proceed with this project or not, because we have to get grant requests done and presented, and some of those take place after the bids are done. So we have to have an accepted bid by July 1 on the state funds and the federal funds by May 1. So we've held this off about as long as we can. If you look at the cash flow statement, page 11 is the cash flow. Million-dollar project at the top, our share, interest-free state of Nebraska loan, and property tax valuation, that comes in later. Okay, so then we've got estimated hangar rental revenue of $18,240, and our annual payments are $76,977. That leaves a balance due of $58,737 each year for the next 10 years, and we could round that off to $60,000 or so there. So we're about $60,000 short. So basically, what Norfolk Airport Authority is asking you is to take the revenue from our other hangars and reinvest it back into hangars. But in doing so, then the hangar rent doesn't pay the general ledger bills, just the general expenses. So a tax increase of the $60,000 a year for the next 10 years is what we're asking for. And we'll answer any questions that you, we will try to answer any questions.
You've laid it out very well for us, I will say. Thank you. You've heard what we asked for, and we have any...
Well, the question had arisen earlier as to why we wouldn't do like four-place or six-place. If you go back to page eight, and look at your mobilization and your engineering costs, those would appear again on another set of hangars. So we're probably saving over $100,000 by doing the eight-place at one time. It's cost-efficient to go with the eight-place hangar.
Counsel?
So the estimate was prepared when, then, this cost estimate?
For the eight-place? Well, it was prepared so that we could submit in time...
Yeah. When was it prepared?
The final one, I believe, was February last year.
Okay. And what pops up?
No, I'm sorry. It says right here, May 2014 it was revised.
Okay. And I just put it out there for general feel. I've looked at two nested tee since then, that are only sixes, and I'll throw everything else out except for the nested tee cost itself, which is basically, is, you know, there's only a couple of them that really provide that material that way. And this was in Valentine, Nebraska, and for a six-place nested tee, their low bid item or low bid number on it was $541,665, and that was only 7,838 square feet. And so I'm going, how do we go from that to something small thousand, half again as much? And it's comparing, I think their budget number was $486 for the eight-place nested tee, and even just a straight six-place nested tee was $541. And you got 33% more hangar there, too. So I'm just wondering how accurate the estimate numbers are, because this is actual field price of the hangar.
Did it include insulation and electrical and whatever electrical was required to set up service in there, or did they use an old service, or...
They, what they had, yeah, there was insulation in it, and there was electrical, and they were close to the additional hangars, so...
Well, we, when did we have a meeting with Olson to go over this?
November?
Yeah.
I think it was in November.
Yeah. We had to get serious, you know, about how big the hangar doors are going to be and how they've heights, and how much concrete out in front and everything else. So to tighten up this budget, we had a meeting with Olson, and these are the budget numbers that they gave.
Well, and I guess that's what we're requesting in the end, so if it comes in and it isn't anywhere as close to this, are we still going forward with it? I mean, if we're a quarter million dollars off, and then suddenly we've got to go back to the taxpayers and say that we need another quarter million covered in the next 10 years?
No, they said that this, they won't go over this.
Well, that's what they're saying, but he's asking, what are we going to do with that?
Because I, it's not Olson's, but another engineer threw out the same estimates for his out there, and he had the estimate out for the six-place for everything that was going along with it, and he missed it by 40%. So, I mean, that's what concerns me. So, I mean, it would be great if Olson's is telling us if it goes over, they're going to eat the rest of it. I don't think so, but that would be nice.
Okay. Well, I tell you what, we won't, let's just say that it goes over. I mean, if it's 40% over, I don't, we're not going to build it. But let me promise you that if we're over this money, over the million dollars or something, I will come back here and ask you what you would like us to do. If it's way over, we'll just, there won't be a question. But we will not come back to you and say, hey, this thing costs 40% more money, sorry. We won't do that.
Now, that Valentine bid, that didn't go through, did it?
I don't know if the second one got awarded now or not, so...
Okay, now, that was the second bid around, second time around?
That was the second time around.
And they were over budget again?
Mm-hmm.
Contractors are making too much money.
No, it's, I mean, the price of the nested tee is what, I mean, there's, you know, there's Rectitude and one other that puts numbers out on it, and past that, nobody else can really compete with how those things go together.
Well, I haven't really talked to anybody from Valentine, but I do know that the contractors out there, way out west, did not want to go with the Davis Bacon Act and a couple other items, so they were having contractors come from ways away, which included their time and travel, which may have affected...
The loan number was a local contractor, fairly local.
Well...
The loan number was from Shadron, Nebraska, so...
Well, I posed the same question you posed to me to Tom Trumbull at Olson Associates and said, look, people are saying that the other hangars have gone over budget. What's the story here? And he told me these numbers would work. Now, he's a salesman, wanted a job.
Yeah. I understand that. I guess my only concern is that, you know, if we say yes to you, then suddenly, well, okay, it goes over, and we're not, we're going back to them in budget time and telling them, well, no, our levy's got to be, instead of five cents or half a cent, it has to be a full cent.
Okay.
That would really be...
Well, what would you like me, I mean, I'm standing here telling you we won't do that. I will come back to you if we run over budget. If it's a little over budget, I will come back to you. If it's way over, we just won't do it. So if you want to word your approval that way or something, that's fine by me.
Well, I guess I'm...
Right.
And I understand your concern.
I mean, I'm just speaking for myself on this, counsel here.
Well, that's a legitimate deal.
Well, and I don't think we're here tonight to make that final. It's nothing more than a presentation to hear what it is that you have to present to us. Jim, I really appreciate where you're taking us, because obviously, you're a heck of a lot more skilled at what's going on here than certainly myself. I'm not speaking for the rest of this council, but I do understand the concern, and it comes back down to, you know, like I say, what you have before us, folks. I think what I would say is that I think there's a comfort in that, but what Councilman Langy is expressing to us is, that's not a sure deal. And we don't want to put ourselves into a situation, you know, with what we're asking for. I think we need to be a little bit more cautious. I think we need to be a little bit more concrete with it. I don't know, what's that do to your timeframe? I don't know when that... You know, and I know the other process, I understand you referred to it a little bit. How far do you take it along to get those numbers to be the actual bid that comes into you? You know, how far do you go with that only to find out that it's not gonna work? I mean, when... Give me the timeline here. I know what you're telling us. So where are we in the process with?
We almost... In order to get the final number, we almost have to go to bid with it.
Right.
And come back with the bids and say, here's the bids. They're good, they're too high.
Is there any reason not to go to bid for it?
No, I don't think so. But we will... I mean, there's some professional fees that we will incur, but, you know, that's... Maybe they can be used to a later date or something like that, but... No, I think we oughta go to bid.
Do you have anything to add to this, the administrator? I mean, thoughts on it?
There's no action item...
Right.
...in front of you tonight, so you're right on there, Mayor. As far as the decision-making process for the mayor, there's no... For the mayor and council, there's no action item tonight for approval of what's before you. As far as going to bid and doing the project or at least seeing what the numbers come back, I guess that's an option that you could explore.
It just seems to me like...
Some danger in that probably as far as your reputation and your interaction with your contractors, you know? Once you go to bid, if you... Once you have the number out there, the number's out there for everybody to see. And then if you don't have a corresponding funding source, you shell the project again and start over unless it's a way later date or a change in project, comprehensive change in project, you do have those numbers out there, you know, it's an obvious thing. So I don't know what that means for the airport authority.
Okay, so, let's see. Now, do we come to you to propose an action item for your next meeting? Or do you put that on your agenda or how do we do that?
What'd you ask, Dan? I'm sorry. What did you ask?
Oh, for you to... You don't have an action item tonight?
Right.
Okay. So do we come back to you and ask for an action item or do you do that internally or?
Do is ask for the action item if you want to, and we can put it on the agenda. I was under the impression when the request was made that it was only presentation and you were gonna present the data that you collected as requested, and that's what we did.
What's the timeline for your grant applications again? When do you have to?
Well, our state application has been approved and that has to be sealed up with a signed contract by July first. Now, as far as the federal funds go on the taxiway part of it, there, we're gonna have to have paperwork lined up by February because those grants will be approved in early March. And then we have to...
Right, right, yeah, see.
Yeah.
See, now this project doesn't... I mean, to delay it six months or something like that, the federal funds go away and the state hangar funds go away. So this is just... These two pieces have come together and I know we're pushing it, but we're trying to keep those two pieces, the state money and the federal money.
Is there any positiveness for you to take... Sounds like Councilman Langley's done some work on this. What if you were to take his numbers that he has gotten from Valentine and show that to Olson?
I think we did that. I did that. I asked him, I said, hey, how come this is so far over budget and you say we can bid this and build this for this? And I don't know, he... I was satisfied with his answer. I don't remember what the answer was. I was satisfied with it.
Well, he talked about the Davis Bacon Act and the local contractors and I think there was another item in there. But he also talked about all the concrete that they wanted and they wanted it poured immediately and they wanted people working twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
So you've had this conversation regarding?
Yes.
Yes, we have, yeah.
All right, I apologize.
However, that was bid number one.
Well, that's what they...
That was bid number one that got thrown out. I have not talked to him since bid number two.
Number two.
Yeah, because bid number two did not reflect twenty-four hour, twenty-four-seven.
Yeah, all I know about is the first one.
And it reflected springtime work.
Yeah, we have not...
Because that's the only reason that we looked at it, so...
I have not had a conversation with him after bid number two.
This is Dennis. I have a question. Do you have to have the federal grant to be able to get access to these tee hangers?
Well, it's four-hundred thousand dollars. I mean, of which forty thousand would be our part.
But if you don't...
We don't have to have it, we could put that in... Into the amount we're requesting.
That's the crux of my question. If you don't get the federal grant, the cost of the hangers goes up by four-hundred thousand?
But can you... The other... The flip side of that is, can you take the federal grant and do the paving and not do the hangers?
They won't do that because they say they won't build a taxi lane to nowhere.
That was... I was afraid that's what they were gonna say, but...
It has to be in conjunction with.
So since there's no action item tonight, if you make a request for the next meeting, that gives you a couple weeks for you guys to talk over some of the remaining concerns. And it sounds like within the timeline you're talking about to get that application in, you need that action item requested in the next meeting or so.
At your next meeting?
So that...
Yes, please.
Yeah, yeah. So that sounds like a reasonable course of action to me.
That'd be before January.
Yeah, so we have a meeting next Monday night. So, yeah, and yours is two weeks. So what we'll do at our meeting is I'll suggest that we proceed however you tell us to proceed, probably go to bid and have everything taken care of in our meeting so that when we hear what you do, we'll either proceed or not. I think that'll work. So we would...
So we request to be...
An action item at the next meeting.
Okay.
I got one more question on this, I guess. Do you... If you build an eight-place hangar, do you plan on it being full right away?
Right now, I have four current tenants that want to go in to the newer, more expensive hangers, which opens up some of our older hangers, which these I know of. I know like two people I know for sure are gonna take them.
Maybe I should restate that. Would you have all of your hangers completely full even if some wanted to move to a new one and you brought in new tenants to an old one? When I'm looking at this, you have a budget of eighteen thousand two hundred and forty dollars and that number comes from the eight-place hangar being completely full.
Hundred percent active.
So if it's not, that's half of that, so now your sixty thousand goes up to, say, sixty-nine thousand, right?
Right, but we can't guarantee...
Possibly one year, but we don't know how soon it could... All of your hangers would be full again, too.
It's hard to guarantee that they'd be full immediately when we're finished because...
But your budget number, that's why I'm saying that, is your budget number says you're gonna need sixty thousand dollars a year for ten years.
If I were to give you an estimate, I would estimate it'll take us six months to reach hundred percent occupancy. So, yeah, that number will...
For the first year.
You're thinking in the first year, you'd have it full within six months. You'd have all of your hangers full within six months.
Yes.
We can always fill them with outside storage, non-aircraft, but we don't wanna do that because then when aircraft wants a hangar, then we have to scroll them out.
No, we don't wanna do that.
We don't wanna do that.
We're not getting into that.
I know.
No.
Are you charging the same amount for the new hangar as you are for like an old hangar?
The same amount as what's on our last two corporate hangers that we built.
Okay, so it's a little higher square foot.
It's higher.
Yeah, which it should be.
And maybe this is all an estimate, it may even be higher than this.
Okay, well...
Well, I think you're gonna walk away with a lot of further discussion to be had. Again, like I say, I think you've come back with response to certainly the questions that were raised by the council. But I do think, too, there's... And I see a hand up over here, but I do think, too, there is truly a concern that needs to be addressed before we're comfortable in giving our final okay. Shane?
One question that I feel that in this process was why... How the board went about making the decision to go to ten percent. Why ten percent? The first... When you raised your hangar rents, your existing ones, why was the logic in choosing ten percent versus five percent versus fifteen, twenty, what, fifty?
Well, if you study the comparison sheet, we had quite a bit of conversation and we had quite a few of our hangar people at the meeting also.
Dan, you need to talk to them.
Oh, I'm sorry. We had quite a bit of conversation and we... Our hangar people showed up at our meeting and, you know, we had a discussion with them and, you know, we had comments that went all the way from, well, by golly, yeah, we don't want the new hangers out here if you're gonna raise my rent because I have to pay for the new hangers. And then other people went on. So that's where we ended up based on the comparisons from other cities and suggestions from our tenants and whatever. So that's how we got there.
Okay. All right, you, too. Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. All right. We have a couple of public hearings. So first of all, let's look at the public hearing at the request of JMHSLC for the final plan of their... For their plan development. I'm gonna open this hearing and it looks to me like we have a gentleman that's ready to come forward and speak to this. How are you?
Mayor and members of the council, I'm LaVern Schroeder and I'm representing Chris Merkel tonight on his proposed plan development. We had this preliminary plat before you approximately two weeks ago. This is a tract of land that's located a mile and a half south of two-seventy-five and basically two miles to the west of Twenty-Fifth Street, the south on... We're actually south on Thirty-seventh Street. What Chris is proposing to do is he... Previously, he did a subdivision of eighty acres out there where he created three lots. This plan is a planned development for the center lot, which is Lot Two. What Chris does, Merkel Manufacturing, they manufacture mudflaps and they work for the auto industry. And he's got some additional contracts and this is the purpose for this. He wants to expand his business. He wants to build a building out there that's sixty by a hundred and expand his operation. Right now, he's been working out of the garage because it's real small and... But it won't work. He has to have a larger operation. If you have any questions on it, other than that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions come for him, counsel at all, for LaVern? Okay?
No, no chance, not even the weather. Not as bad as it was last night.
Very good. That doesn't mean you're done yet, Phil LaVern. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to this or may have questions of? Trent, anything that we need to know about this that...
Mayor and council, there was a couple changes from the... On the final, and one was this holding tank. There was some language in there about septic and so the septic, they can't have a septic there since it's commercial. So they have a holding tank that's going in. So a couple of minor things and it's in the Wellhead area there, so... I think that was about it. For the most part, some... They expanded their parking lot a little for future development. So they had like four stalls and if that got bigger, then we'd have to decide whether we had to go through a whole plan development again. And so instead, we just advised them to put future in there so we wouldn't have to go through all this again just for parking. Other than that, it was pretty straightforward.
Very good. Okay. If no further questions or discussion, how about a planning commission report?
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing at the request of JMHSLC for a final plan of JMHSLC plan development located at two thousand one South Thirty-seventh Street. JMHS wants to relocate their mudflap production to a building at twenty-oh-one South Thirty-seventh Street. The planning commission recommends approval of the final plan development on an eight-to-zero vote.
Okay, and with that, I will close the hearing and ask for consideration of ordinance number five-three-three-three approving the final plan as presented us.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, short-titled, Beth.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, and providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right. If you'll vote, please.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-three thirty-three carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-three thirty-three on second and third.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance fifty-three thirty-three carries on second and third.
All right. And next is a public hearing to consider a paving waiver at the request of Porter Pit LLC on property located south of Monroe Avenue on Victory Road. Again, I will open this hearing and I believe the gentleman that's been here a few times before is here to discuss with us.
The attorney will argue with your use of the word gentleman.
I was being polite, Dick, it's a new year.
Good evening. I'm Dick Johnson and I'm representing Porter Pit LLC on this paving waiver. This is concurrent with a conditional use permit which the planning commission approved in December for twenty acres that Mr. Porter owns down on South Victory Road. Actually, it's where Road Builders is working now. There's an existing building with some existing concrete parking. Mr. Porter is proposing moving a concrete crushing machine in there and stockpiling various materials for sale, which is what the conditional use permit addressed. We have to... Part of this was addressing a paving waiver. As I said, there's concrete parking back around the building, but there's nothing between there... It's gravel or dirt or whatever you wanna call it between Victory Road and back to the parking. And additionally, probably a scale will be put in with the eastern ledge of it about a hundred and seventy-five feet from Victory Road. What we're proposing is a waiver for a total of ten years. We would phase it so that the first year or within two years, we would build a hundred feet from the edge of Victory Road back west. And then within ten years, which corresponds with the life of the conditional use permit to tie it in probably to the scale approach. And I guess I'm here to ask for that and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Johnson? None? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dick. Discussion among it all. Everybody clear what's going on here because he lost me in a bit of that, so if you're comfortable. You know, me and my sidewalk waivers, so... Do we have a planning commission report on this?
Yes. The Norfolk Planning Commission reviewed the request for a ten-year paving waiver for Porter Pit LLC on Victory Road south of Monroe. The planning commission approved a conditional use permit for a concrete crushing operation for Porter Pit on South Victory Road. They are requesting a ten-year paving waiver at this location. The request is to complete this hard surfacing from Victory Road to the crushing operation scale incrementally. The waiver provides for the first one hundred feet to be waived within the next two years to be paved within the next two years and the balance of the paving to be completed within ten years. The planning commission recommends approval on an eight-to-zero vote.
Okay. Right now? Before I close this hearing? Go ahead.
The question that I had is, this is separate and apart from the conditional use permit, which my understanding is was issued by the planning commission. And if I'm not mistaken, that provision, that conditional use permit had some track-out protection, if you will? How does that coincide with this when it seems to me, if I'm understanding this, that this is talking about paving within two years, the hundred feet? that this is talking about paving within two years, the hundred feet, from, that's, that is the trackout protection, is it not? So what happens to the trackout protection for the first two years?
I'm gonna...
Does that make sense?
It does. Mayor and council, the first two years, that came about, and I'll kinda talk about that, because South Victory Road, it's not a very, it's asphalt. If you've been on it, it's rough, there's a lot of truck traffic, and the county is looking at redoing that. So, not, they will probably be end up, and Dick, you can probably talk to this more so than me, but that'll be concrete, so we're gonna have some height differentiations there. And we're also probably maybe looking at some shoulders possibly, a little bit. So that's where the language of the first two years came in, because when Lyman Ritchie, if they, of course, I'm not sure what their schedule's like when they're gonna start pumping, but I would, I would hope that road would be done by, by the time Lyman Ritchie starts, because that'll be a lot of truck traffic, so. That's where that language initially came from. If there's trackout onto the Victory Road, they will have to clean that up. I guess that's only, the conditional use permit states that they have to keep it clean, and, and I joked at the planning commission meeting that we have people that ride their bicycles out there that will probably watch it, so.
But you didn't give any names, right?
No.
Okay. All right.
I guess Trent, one, one question, though, 'cause trackout protection doesn't necessarily mean paving.
No, it doesn't. It can be a multitude of things.
So, I mean, there's, there's still the potential for track, I mean, on basically every site that, that you do a swip on anymore, you have to have trackout protection. So, and, so that, I mean, those aren't paved for, for definitive reasons, and this is a good example of why you wouldn't wanna pave it right away, so. But it's not like we, that, that we're giving up on the trackout protection, it's just that it isn't paving, which is different.
Anyone else with any questions on this? Are you, I understand? I mean, you're, you're just asked the question.
I just thought it was a legitimate question, because...
I'm sure it is.
If I was at the, if I was at the planning commission meeting when that was granted, where you're talking about, about, about protecting that, I don't, I wasn't there. I don't know if there was discussion about pavement in particular, or what there was, but, you know, that's, that's, that was the question.
Okay, all right. Well, then I think I'm gonna go ahead, and we're gonna close this public hearing and ask for consideration of resolution 2015-1, approving the ten-year paving waiver as just discussed.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Any further discussion? If not, I would ask that you please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2015-1 is adopted.
Okay. And under regular agenda, consideration of approval of the mutual aid agreement with Elkhorn Valley Mutual Aid. I'm asking for consideration of.
Your Honor, I move consideration of approval of the mutual aid agreement with the Elkhorn Valley Mutual Aid.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. Trent, do you wanna fill us in a little bit here?
I'll refer Scott on...
I'm sorry. Okay.
Mayor and council, we've had a longstanding relationship with Elkhorn Valley in the form of that mutual aid agreement. This is, in essence, a housekeeping issue to bring that up to speed, citing the Interlocal Act that gives us the authority even enter into that agreement was inserted. I appreciate Clint's help in getting that language in there, and it clarified the fire and EMS and all, and all the various elements that we could provide mutual aid to one another. So it's really a cleanup effort to make it flow a little better and speak more specifically to the things that we agreed to do or the things we don't agree to do in terms of sharing our resources with one another. So, as you can see by the document, you, you are the last signature to be obtained, and we'll have a new agreement to move forward. And it gives us a ten-year look back so that if things change or we need to address something better or different, it kinda forces us to take time to look at that document, because otherwise it sort of sits, sits on the shelf. So this'll give us an opportunity to make sure that it says what it's supposed to say. So I would appreciate your support in clarifying that, and if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay. Any questions at all for Scott? All right, thanks very much, appreciate it. Any further discussion by the council at all? If not, I would ask that you vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Next, we're looking for consideration of resolution 2015-2, that we'll be adopting the risk management policy statement for the City of Norfolk.
I'm looking for consideration of, if someone would make that motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
All right. Motion with a second, and it looks like Shane's gonna speak to us on this.
Yes, Your Honor and council, this is our risk management, or your risk management, the community's risk management policy and statement that, as you know, we have many, many resources the City of Norfolk's in charge with, the citizens in charge, you as elected officials, to take care of their resources and make sure they're protected in the long term from, from risk and liability issues as we go forward. This is a renewal of that commitment to go forward with a risk management statement. We had one in 2002 that the council adopted. This is basically what this document reinvigorates that. It also is kind of a housekeeping issue for us. It brings together our event planner guide that Diane's gonna be speaking to next, so our languages are matching each other. We had a lot of different citizens working on the event guide and had that suggestion brought to us here last year, which has been fairly successful, that the guide brings the risk management language into a format that the folks that engage in business with us through either a construction contract, more, more, not more, but just as much through contracts, through facility usage, whether it's Big Bang Boom, or music in the park, or the like, any of that, using our softball fields, baseball fields, any of our facilities in general. We try to manage our risk, as we should, and try to transfer that risk to the parties that are bringing the risk with them, and that's what this statement basically says in a nutshell. The language, again, brings it back together with that event guide, and those are the changes that you will see in front of you, I think, in your packet. You should have some red language that shows the language that has been changed, and that basically is the language that is asserted or had been in your event guide, so. Basically a housekeeping issue, but importantly so, it's a recommitment from the mayor-elected officials that risk management in our community is important to us. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. We have a lot of staff here that worked on that in conjunction with each other, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the, about the statement.
Okay, thanks, Shane. Any questions at all, council?
So Shane, category B always existed, we just redefined some parameters on it, or is it...
Yes, it existed in the event guides, we wanted to place it into, we wanted to place it so the language was identical from the event guide to the risk management statement, councilman, so that language is the same, and you'll see that in the event guide going forward.
So, our risk management statement before that, and...
Did it have a B, is what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes, it did.
I didn't think we jumped from A to C.
No, it had a B, it had a B, but the, we just changed the, the language so it was the same as the event guide, and I, I have that here, digging it out if you wanna, if you want me to go through it for you.
No, the, the question more then was, did the limits change, or they just really reflected what we had before that, then?
They reflected what we had before.
Okay.
Any other questions at all, council? Okay, if no further discussion, I would ask that you please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries. Resolution 2015-2 is adopted.
Okay, and final discussion here is the consideration of approval of an updated event guide to assist organizers requesting to use City of Norfolk facilities run a safe and successful event.
I'll make the motion, Your Honor. Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Diane.
I'm Diane Becker, Communications Director here at City of Norfolk, and I was here a year ago with this brand-new event guide that we had for citizens who are wanting to hold an event and were a little baffled at how, at all the steps they had to take. And so we put together this event guide, and they can get this online, they can get this at the library, they can come into the city offices and pick one up, and the first thing it has, the first page, is the simple steps of what they have to do. So, people have been using this all year, as Shane said, it's been very successful. People now understand what they have to do, why they have to do it, and they've been very good about completing it. All we did that I'm asking you tonight to do would be just to approve an updated one. Of course, since this was the first year of having it, we forgot a few things, and we tweaked it a bit, added, asked for a little bit more information about what they were gonna do maybe in some of these events, and so that's what we've got here. So I'm just asking for your approval of it so we can go ahead with 2015, withholding a lot of great activities in Norfolk.
You said some citizens helped work on this? Yes.
Well, Kim Kupnaski actually brought us one from Sioux City, which was really thick, because we didn't need to have all those pages in, but we used that, that we're like, this is a great idea, let's, let's do that. So actually, staff worked on it within the city, and, you know, Clint, with his office, they had some things they needed, and Beth's office they needed, so we went by those, those items and just tweaked it a bit, and there you go.
Through our, all of our interactions throughout the last years, we have interactions with event folks that are having events, we try to collect all that data, and we tweak the document so it'd be more workable for them and more workable for us. So in the sense that we had a lot of interaction with the event document, we had a lot of citizen input, because we do every year, and it's, you know, we, we hope and we think, because of our experience last year, that the event guide will maybe cut off some of those negative interactions, because folks will know what is expected of them, and they can get ahead of the game.
Are, are liability requirements in line with other communities, our size?
That would be more for the, with our risk management policy that we had.
Yeah, the, I guess it's probably a question for the last item, but it's, I'm looking at the liability amount totals included in the event guide, and I'm just wondering if they're comparable to what you, we would find in other communities that do these sorts of guides.
Answer to that is yes. Our first-class cities, I think they're fairly comparable. Are they exactly the same? No. Everybody manages risk a little differently, each community has a different outlook on it, but at the end of the day, everybody manages their risk. Either they manage it, or it's managed for them. So we have chosen for many, many years to manage our risk, which is prudent, and we got our insurance requirements out of that, and we try to get to a place where, really the design of this was trying to break down those categories so we wouldn't have to, to, to be too restrictive to folks and, and have too much liability insurance, but yet define our categories so the ones that are a little more riskier, like an open road race, for example, would have the ability to get us to up to the tort limits, and that's what we've done with this document and with your risk management statement, so.
And Councilman Mone, I can tell you, I did a little bit of research on this, too, and there's an awful lot of communities that do not allow for runs and such to be held on an open street. So we put, our city staff has put some work into that, too. You might share that they're working hard to come up with a, what, a two, or a three-point-two?
Thirteen point one.
An actual half, half marathon?
Full half, and then it has the full-half marathon.
As well as...
...on our breaking story now, Susan.
Full-half marathon. Full-half marathon, we have a course that staff's been working on to actually have a closed, a closed half marathon...
Right.
...in our community. It does involve some county roads, but they're not well-traveled roads, and we've spoken with the county, and they've been open to closing those roads for that, during that period of time, and then we'll be able to just close the track, and then that moves these liability requests up, or down, from five million dollars to two million dollars, or one million dollars, actually.
Which is big.
So that's a big deal, you know, and it's a big event. So those are the kind of things we're trying to work with the community on to try to find a good priority so we're safe, we can have events, we're still safe, and, and our risk is managed.
Right. Yes?
Mayor, to further, to what Josh, Mr., what Councilman Mone was talking about, when, when the, the insurance amounts that are set in there are the same ones that were in the event guide that y'all approved a year ago, and when those were come up with, what we, what we did is we went through, and my numbers might be off a little bit, but about seventy different agreements that we had, and we looked at what those activities were, we looked at the amount of insurance that was required at that point in time. We then had input from, the, the one thing I think is important that wasn't mentioned here is we had input from local insurance agents who are oftentimes the folks that are providing that insurance to meet the city's requirements, and when we did that, they were aligned with what is in the event guide, what's in the risk management plan as to the amount of those. So it wasn't something where we just sat around and came up with those, but we had, I don't, this won't really sound right, but we had some folks representing the other interests or from the other side that were involved in that as well.
Any other questions, or before we let Diane sit down? Nice work. Okay, if no further discussion, I would ask for your vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right. I see nothing further on the agenda. We are adjourned.